Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our business meeting for January. Yes, this is the first part of our meeting today. We're going to be leading off with our workshop, which will have two items of discussion, the first one being our budget and the second one leading into our educational planning discussion. So, without further ado, Dr. Boone.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. Members of the board, good afternoon. As we have committed previously and this year being no exception, we said we would come back to the board and share what we know about the various revenue assumptions, given the analysis of the Governor's proposed amendments, along with what we know about some anticipated revenue from the city and where we are in our process. So, this afternoon, Ms. Ingram, my Chief Financial and Operations Officer, will walk us through a presentation that tells where we are and what we know about the revenue and what we don't know yet, too, since the legislature is in session.
Good, Dr. Boone. Good afternoon, Dr. Gabriel, Mr. Clanton, School Board members, and Dr. Boone. I will be giving you a high-level overview of our current budget, our current budget, and then looking forward into next year. The topics I would like to discuss would be our fiscal year 2018, 2019, operating budget, the current year, revenue sources overview, and then talk about our fiscal year 2019, 2020 preliminary operating budget, which I will go over the revenue assumptions, where we are currently in the process, what's new for 2020, and next steps. What you have before you now is our current operating budget for 2018, 2019. We have a total of $329.6 million based on a projected March ADM of 27,983 students. Fifty-eight point eight percent of our budget comes from the state, thirty-eight point four percent comes from the city, one point seven is federal funds, and then other local funds of approximately one percent. The next slide is just giving you your overview of our enrollment projections. Over the past ten years, from 2009 through 2019, it's a comparison of our fall membership, which is typically September 30th numbers that we present to the state, and our average daily membership, which is the student population that we are funded on. In comparing fall membership from 2009 to 2019, we lost over 4,000 students in declining enrollment. And then, in looking at the projected March ADM, we are projected to be currently, right now, at 27,764 students compared to what we showed on the other slide of 27,983, which is down approximately 200 students. So, when we started the preliminary budget for 2020, we used the second year of the biennial budget for 2018 to 2020. And in that second year, the state was projecting 404 fewer students. They told us that our VRS fringe benefit rates will remain the same from this year for next year, and it included three percent, the state's share, of a three percent salary increase for funded SOQ positions. And keep in mind, we always say funded because we know that the state does not fund all of the positions we have in our budget. So, if the state is doing three percent on the funding position, that means that the local pick up the difference for those that they do not fund. Under the compensation supplement for 2020, under the biennial budget, is three percent that will be effective July 1, 2019. Keep in mind, this year, they didn't fund any salary increase, so the salary increase that we gave this year was locally funded. In order to receive those funding, the district must certify a salary increase for the biennial over the two years of averaging three percent. And that money that we will get from the state will be continued upon their staple general fund revenue forecast. So, in the Governor's proposed budget that was submitted on December 18, 2018, the state currently was showing an additional $2.1 billion in new general fund revenue. And what they are proposing, or the Governor's proposing, is put eight point one percent of that towards K-12 education. So, he's proposing an increase in our funding. And that's the Governor's proposal. But as you know, we have a House version and a Senate version, and at some point, within the next couple of weeks, they will be having what they call crossover, where they get to see what each one of them propose. And then the General Assembly will come out with a budget for the final year. And we're anticipating that in February. Currently, the General Assembly convened on January the 9th, and like I say, we're anticipating them to end February 23rd. This is a short session, which is about 45 to 46 days versus typically the long section of being about 60 days. Also, in the Governor's budget, normally you will go through updates to direct aid payments for changes in enrollment, program participation, and other technical updates. They also update sales tax projections and lottery estimates. And if we look at the budget that's being proposed by the Governor, both of those, the sales tax and the lottery, are projected to increase. One thing I would like to just share with you is, as our sales tax revenue increase, it has an inverse impact on our basic aid, because in the calculation of basic aid, they subtract out sales taxes. So, as we see sales tax going up, you will see our basic aid payments going down. Not necessarily. We could lose. And then the sales tax is based on the school age populations of two years prior. One of the reasons for the increases in sales taxes, I think, we are beginning now, the state of Virginia, to charge sales tax on internet sales. So, that is an increase, the reason they are seeing additional revenue coming in right now in the Governor's budget. Impact on the current fiscal year, which is the current year we are in, one of the proposal is to increase additional funding for at-risk add-on. This is additional funds that's added on top of basic aid. In the Governor's budget, he's proposing to increase the maximum percentage of add-on from 13% to 16% for the current year, which should give us additional funds in the current fiscal year. However, with declining enrollment, a little over 200 students, the impact of, if we should get the increase in at-risk funds, we will only receive an additional $132,000 for this year.
A call at the legislative luncheon that day, that was the conversation we were having with Congressman Bobby Scott when he asked what was the at-risk add-on and what the state had been doing. And so, during the recession, the state bumped back the value of the at-risk add-on, and now they are trying to build up. But we still, sometimes it's paid out of lottery funds, sometimes it's paid out of state funds. So, it doesn't seem to really have a stable, permanent home for us to depend on.
Also included in Governor Northam's budget is he increased the compensation supplement effective July 1, 2019, from the three percent I shared with you earlier to five percent. And that is based on funded SOQ instructional and support personnel positions. You know, we often tell you that most districts hire more people than the minimum that the state funds. So, the funding that we will get is based on the funded SOQ positions. The other thing is, it must be over the two years of the biennial. So, we see five percent, but it means it can be a combination of five percent the first year of the biennial, or five percent the second year of the biennial, which is next year, or a combination thereof. If you recall, for the current school year, we gave an average of 3.3% salary increase. So, in order to meet the minimum for the requirements to receive this funding, if it could approve, then the minimum is a 1.7% for next year to add to the 3.3 for this year to get the five percent. So, that is a way we can meet that criteria and get the funding from the state. Also, the Governor is proposing additional state funding for school counselors for 2020. And the way he proposed to do that is to change the SOQ staffing standards. Currently, at the elementary level, the state staffing is 500 students to one counselor, middle school is 400 to one, and high school is 350 to one. And then, on the right side, his proposal is 375 per elementary school, 325 for per one counselor at middle school, and 300 to one at high schools. Now, if we were to look at the minimum of what the state funds, we currently have more counselors than what the state funds. And even with changing the ratio, the way he has done decreasing the caseload, we will still have more counselors than what the state funds. But it comes down to what will be presented by Dr. Boone as a recommendation of how we go forth with that, because basically what means those, some of the schools that exceeds will be shifted to some of the other schools, and looking at what the needs are, whether or not the recommendation from Dr. Boone, what that will look like. So, you will get that presentation when she presents her budget, probably late February.
And if I will, real remind the board that we did take action last year to ensure that every elementary school, every school had a one full-time counselor. So, that was part of what pushed us above in terms of some of the standards.
And actually, the Governor is proposing to do a three-year phase-in to have counselors where it would be 250 to one by the year of 2022. That is, if this is approved, and if it goes through the next couple of years, he's proposing that ratio of students to counselor to decrease significantly. He also has in his budget for 2020, I talked to you about the at-risk funding for 2019, he's also proposing an increase of what was in the current biennial budget to go from 14% to 16% in 2020. He's also proposing to increase the supplemental lottery, lottery per pupil amount. Remember, I told you earlier that those projections are increasing. So, in his budget, he's proposing also to increase that for 2020 for us.
Actually, an article online now that talks about lottery exceeding some expectations, and a lot of that had to do with some of these mega games that were going on last year with the huge pots, winning pots. And so, that's what's creating the influx of cash in a lot of the system.
Another component of the Governor's budget proposal is to provide state funding to continue the support of those students enrolled in the federally-funded preschool development grant, which we refer to as the VPI Plus program. That grant ends this year from federal funding. So, he's proposing to put funding into the local budget to try to sustain those classes that, actually, it's 13 districts in the Commonwealth that are using the VPI money. So, money is provided for those 13 districts to sustain it. There are some differences in the funding. When you receive funding for a grant, you know, they have given us, let's say, $1.5 million to run the program, which includes just not the teachers and the parents, but whatever other support positions that's needed. And the number of students you serve doesn't, the funding doesn't go down if we don't reach that maximum of class size. But when we are dealing with state funding, it's going to be based on our fall membership, which means whatever number that's reported to the state of students enrolled, and that program has a September 30th, we will get a per pupil amount for each child enrolled September 30th. If we enroll students after September 30th, the locality has to pay the full cost of that. So, we are now in the process of evaluating the funding that we are getting from the state, which is less than what the grant was giving us, and to determine what the recommendation as to classes to recommend for next year. In addition to not only that funding, currently, with the new budget money that's in there, there is no local required MASH for 2020. But for 2021 and beyond, if we get the money, they're going to increase the local match 10% until it reaches what our composite index is. And then, in addition to that, in addition to that, there are some new requirements for pre-K, what we call an unfunded mandate, where the state approved a plan in November 2019 of how we are providing additional assessments and developing PD plans for teachers and parents and observations of that. We are also currently looking at that now and to see what impact that will have on our operating budget. We did not get additional funding to do that. The state did say that they should have some money available for competitive grants to go towards professional development, but we need to look at that and see how it turns out. But that's one of those things that when Dr. Boone presents, will be an unfunded state mandate, that we do that.
And it's quite intensive in terms of the time that it would take. Not pushing back on the issues of how we address quality in our pre-K classrooms, but the model that has been developed and what they are saying has to happen with each observation, and they're twice-a-year observations and all of that, gets to be a little heavy-handed.
Next, I want to talk about city revenue. As you know, in the past, there has been discussion between the superintendent and city manager as to the funding that the city provides. Last year, when the city approved their budget, they also adopted a policy that which they call local revenue allocation policy, which comes up to saying that based on different, 14 different revenue streams, that we had some conversation and agreeance upon what those revenue streams are. Based on those 14 revenue streams, some of them are like real estate taxes, property taxes, business licenses, recordation taxes, machinement two taxes, about 14 of those. They will share in that revenue of 29.55%, and they will give that to the school district as non-dedicated local tax revenue streams here. So, if there are money, the city has funding in their budget that's dedicated to certain things, we do not share in that revenue. It's only these 14 revenue streams that we will share in at 29.55% of what they get, of the growth. Also included in the policy that was passed by council, it establishes processes which gives, NPS, they will give us estimates three times a year. Like, in September is the first estimate, and February is the second, and then March, where we are finalizing our budget, we'll get the third estimate of what they are projecting the funding would be, what the 29.55% will be. It also includes in their communications and how we address revenue shortfalls. For instance, if the revenue is coming, is actually less than what they projected, there is verbiage in the allocation policy of how we address those revenue shortfalls. Also, is information in there of how we do true-up. If the actual exceeds what we estimated, then we will share in the excess as well. They will appropriate that to the next year for the budget. It also talks about how we will request reappropriation of aversion funds. If we have, we do not spend all of our revenue in one fiscal year, we can go back to city council and ask them to reappropriate that money to us. We've been doing that all along, anyway. And then it talks about, if we don't request it within the first year, the second year, it go into CIP to work, to purchase buses. You know, we have a huge replacement cycle of our school buses, and we only get $1 million a year. So, if we do not request any reversion funds according to the language in the policy, it will revert to CIP for one-time expenditures. It also states in there that we can request an increase in local contribution. And it also talks about how we are to monitor and revisit that policy. There's a timeline that the school division and city will get together and revisit what's in the policy. In our budget, we have small amounts of monies. I told you the percentage, but the largest piece of that is federal impact aid. And we are currently in the process of working on submitting that application that's due the end of the month. You recall, we had some, with our new school board, student reps, they did the piece. And so, we are now getting, have those cards coming in, and the first submission will be due at the end of this month. And then we have between the first submission and June 30th to do another submission. We have gotten cards back, about that many of them back, that are incomplete, done wrong, or whatever. So, we take this time after we submit the original application to send it back to the schools, to try to get them completed, so that by June 30th, we can add to that number, is the goal. One other thing I would like to talk about federal funds, you know, we had the federal shutdown, and the question becomes, what is that impact is going to be for us for this year? We got a memo from James Lane, the Superintendent of Public Instruction in January, early January, and he states that from the U.S. Department of Education, they have already funded their fiscal, federal fiscal year 2019 through September 30, 2019, and that we are not at risk of losing those funds, the money that flows through. In addition to that, the federal fiscal 2019 grants that come from the federal VDOE, which the state should have gotten that information during the summer, we are good to receive those funds for this year as well. But when you look at our child nutrition funds, it's a little bit differently. You know, our child nutrition is, operates as an enterprise fund, they're self-sufficient. So, what USDA has said initially that our reimbursement claims through the end of January, we were good. But then they came back and said that on January the 8th, that they will fund two additional months through March 2019 for federal reimbursement for our food service programs. And talking to Ms. Phillips, who handles our program, we feel like we are in pretty good shape with child nutrition as well. Even though they are guaranteed funding through March, if you recall, child nutrition can have a fund balance. So, we're thinking that if we had, we hope it doesn't go beyond much longer, but if need be, we can go into fund balance to sustain us through the end of the school year. So, we feel like for this current year, we are okay with the federal shutdown. And then we have other local funds that we're in the process of currently monitoring and reevaluating to see what that will look like as projection for next year. On the expenditure side of what's new for 2020, we want to continue with Phase Three of the compensation study. Employee benefit plan changes, we are, Mr. Phillips and I are part of the team that, at the Health Consortium, and we were starting those conversations as to what the rates were going to be looking like early next month, as to what to project for that. We also have been phasing in our ITRT's, Instructional Technology Resource Teacher Position, and we are hoping in next year's budget, we can complete that phase-in, but then we will be fully staffed based on the funding of five per 1,000 students for the ITRT positions. We want to continue with the behavior interventional support. You know, last year, we had extra dollars in the budget, and we also had behavior specialist positions, and we want to continue that support. I put on here Phase Two of the Camp Allen. We opened Camp Allen this fall, but now they're in Phase Two, which, under the new PPA schools, so we'll be continuing that, looking at whatever the educational planning recommendation, what the board approves for us to move forward, will be included in the superintendent's budget. And the state unfunded mandates is what I was sharing to you earlier about what came out of what we do with the VPI and the criteria for evaluations and assessments. That all will be included in Dr. Boone's recommendation. We have met and still meeting with some departmental managers, where they have submitted their requests, and we're evaluating that with them. We're updating enrollment projections, and probably early February, typically, Mr. Foody give us a projection as to what we will use as, what to put in the budget of a projected March ADM. Continuing to collect data, do trend analysis, like I said, board discussion on education planning recommendations. We held our first public hearing on November the 28th. So, January, actually, next week, Tuesday, the leadership team, district leadership team, will be looking at what we have received thus far, as far as requests from departments, what the state revenue looked like, what the other recommendations to put into the budget, to look at and come up with, trying to begin to balance the requests with the revenue we're anticipating. Again, in February, we're anticipating General Assembly actions. And I put February, March, because we haven't come up with the final date. I think we have some proposals that Dr. Boone was submitting to the board as to when she will present to her, to you all, what her recommendations are. And typically, the month of March, you are deliberating, and you make your recommendation or adjustments, and the budget is due to City Council on April the 1st.
So, that's basically a high-level overview of where we are currently and where we are with the preparation of the budget for 2020. Are there any questions?
Start with questions. I actually have a couple of questions. Roughly, what percentage of our employment force is above the SOQ-funded positions?
I have not calculated from the Governor's proposed budget. Usually, we have anywhere from 200, 300, 400 positions. A lot of times, when they look at, it's hard to say what it is for transportation, but they give us a dollar amount, and not necessarily how many bus drivers they fund. So, we look at that a little bit differently. But in comparing what they fund, the last time I did the calculation, it was several hundred above SOQ.
Okay. Next question, the VPI conversation, I've heard it a couple of times, it's starting to sink in a little bit, but the Governor is gonna, is proposing to give funds so that we can sustain the classes that we currently have for this year, which are 10. VPI Plus. VPI Plus, which are 10. But going back to your earlier slide, you said that the House and the Senate have their own versions of the budget, and so, will that possibly may not be included in theirs?
Yes.
And so, that's a to-be-continued?
To-be-continued, yes.
Actually, Dr. Gabriel, everything in the Governor's proposal is to-be-continued until we see what the House and Senate versions look like, and then they go into conference and discussions about what they will put forward as a final budget.
Because that was a big conversation that we had with a lot of our senators and delegates when we were up in Richmond, explaining to them how that personally affects Norfolk Public Schools with regards to, you know, about 180 children per class. So, I guess we'll just have to wait and see what they.
And the money that he has in the budget, I don't think is sufficient to fund the current classes we have.
Okay.
The federal government, I think, is, what is it, 1.5, 1.7 million dollars for this year for the VPI, and the Governor's proposing 1.1. So, that's 400, 500, 600,000 dollars difference in what he's putting in his budget compared to what we have for the grant. And that's why I was saying as well, you need to look at how the grant funds. The grant gave us that money to fund the entire program, but what we get from the state is going to be based on actual September 30th enrollment. And in that 1.1 million is saying, if we have X number of students on September 30th, that's what we will get. If we have less, we receive less money. So, it really is looking at, you know, how many students are we serving? Because I don't think all of the classes are full right now. So, federal government, we still have the money. If we don't have them with state funding, we won't get the money. If we don't have them with state funding, we won't get the money.
Or we recall that First Lady has a very strong early childhood focus as part of her platform. So I see this as being, that recommendation as being in support of that platform. The state also received that roughly $9 million grant from the federal government. Actually came out with that weekend we were at the governor's training to build the infrastructure on connecting early childhood programs and around quality. So it'll be interesting to see how this plays out. But I think Ms. Ingram made a very good point. I think there are 13 school districts that have VPI-plus programs. So when you look at a Commonwealth that has 135 school districts, and we're talking about money for 13, it'll be interesting to see how that plays out.
I was thinking about that too, when she'd mentioned that. And then finally, on the VPI topic, do we have an estimate as to how much this unfunded mandate of extra testing and evaluation could cost Norfolk Public Schools?
That will come forth when Dr. Boone presents. We're in the process of looking at what the criteria is and what is going to be required to do what the mandate calls for. So we're vetting, we'll be beginning that next week.
And again, again, while we look at quality, it's going to be an extra challenge burden, for lack of another term, on districts that have high numbers of VPI and VPI-plus classrooms. So for a district that may only have a couple of classrooms, three or four, it's not going to be that significant an impact. But for districts like ours, and you're looking across, you know, 20 or so classrooms, that's a lot.
But that mandate is for all of ours, it's the regular VPI, plus the VPI-plus. So it's all of our preschool programs that this mandate is going to cover. So it's going to be what's funded under the VPI piece that the state funds, the classes that we have with the VPI-plus, plus our locally funded preschool classes. They're all going to fall under this new criteria now.
Okay, I have one last question then. On the guidance counselors, one of the other conversations that we had with our delegates was the distinction between a guidance counselor and a mental health provider, such as a school psychologist or a behavioral therapist. Is this, the governor's strict language is just for guidance counselors? That's my understanding.
That's my understanding, even though there may, I think I've seen where there's a bill that was proposed to call them school counselors, to change the name, which may give you some leeway. I don't know, we don't have all of the ramification of what that is right now.
Very different though.
But they are not mental health counselors in the terminology that we currently use as guidance counselors are defined.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Bassin and then Ms. Camson.
Well, I'm glad you made that distinction because I think we need to have our eye on that because Dr. Boone indicated in a previous meeting. Do we, so to, in reference to the local revenue allocation from the city, do we have the latest estimate?
Yes, we have our first estimate. And first estimate like 1.8 million, I believe. But then there, there were some additional funding at the end of the year that then we may get a little bit more than that for next year. But we should be getting another estimate in February before you get to do all of your deliberations and find out what that second estimate would be.
In regard to the federal impact aid, you had mentioned the big stack that were incomplete. Do we have any sense as to why they may be incomplete?
Well, it could be something missing. It could be they didn't date it. It could be they didn't sign it. It could be their address is not complete. It could be they left their rank off. It can be a myriad of things. So once the technician and accounting gets through and we do the actual application, she will send back to the schools copies of those forms that are not complete and requesting, trying to get that information so that we can submit it in June to get additions.
And I ask that, just to understand if there are trends, is it understanding the form? Is it, you know, are there things that we can do in the future to?
We send out to the schools fairly detailed information of how to complete the form.
Different languages too?
I don't think we have done the conversion yet.
That's, that's the piece I.
Ms. Camson?
When you talked about, and I didn't realize there were so many, 300 or 400 positions.
Some examples could be teaching positions. You know, SOQ funds, staff, it tells you what the ratio should be at class sizes. And if we choose to go lower than that, there's extra position.
Are we still getting reduction in class funds for K-3?
We do, we still get that, right. But I mean, that's included, even though it's not SOQ, then they fund additional positions for that. Or it could be, in this instance, guidance counselors, where we've hired more than what the minimum calls for. It's almost in every category, if you look at support for the teachers. Some of your teacher specialists and instructional specialists that we have to assist the schools, all of those positions are funded in the basic SOQ.
We've talked about in the legislative platform, the issues of lifting the cap on support positions. Because while the state may fund a certain number of nurses or a certain number of psychologists or other support positions, if, there used to be a higher cap on those, which would allow districts to fund, to receive state support for more of those. When that shifted, districts had to make decisions on what support positions they maintain and what those look like. And so that's one of the pushes to lift that cap on those support positions that are SOQ-funded. Like I said, I think that day at the governor's training, we talked about it, maybe only a couple of school districts in the Commonwealth that staff at schools at the SOQ-funded level. Everybody else is well above.
Thank you very much. So next steps for us, the board needs to come together and reevaluate our budget. And I know that Mr. Butts had sent that out to us a while ago. We'll resend that out to the board. I'd appreciate your feedback on our budget and any considerations that you all have with regards to additions, subtractions, thoughts, so that we can make sure that we have input for what we are submitting. The other item is that as a board, it's important for us to come together once, you know, in between when Dr. Boone presents her budget and before we turn over the final budget to the city to determine what our goals and priorities are. Because I, I know that Ms. Camson has shared some of her thoughts and kind of heard some thoughts in passing in various conversations, but I think we should come together as a board to discuss our budget priorities as well. Any thoughts on that latter item? Well, we'll, when we do agenda planning, we're going to earmark some time for us to do that, and that, that'll be the plan. So for right now, the ask is to review the current school board's budget, send any feedback you have to myself, Mr. Clayton, copy Mr., I guess, actually, we have Ms. Jackson with us today. We're going to do a formal introduction at our business meeting, but we have our, our new clerk, who is officially starting with us now. So we can also send it to her, we need to get her email out to everybody so that they can have it. So we'll do that. So that's the first ask. The second ask is to start thinking about what your budget priorities, goals are so that we can have an efficient discussion when we get that on the calendar.
And if I may, Dr. Gabriel, one of the things, again, as a team, we listen to the various comments that board members make in meetings and other places so that, you know, we think about how they balance and try to incorporate some of that into the planning. 100% doesn't get there, 100% of what the team wants doesn't get there. So, but, but we do collect those comments throughout the year to, to try to capture some of that in that early budget.
Yes. Okay, let's go ahead and proceed to our next item of discussion. We have been in deep conversation about the educational planning regarding both the school start times and plans for reconfiguration of popular halls, Fairlawn Elementary, Lake Taylor Middle School, Easton Preschool. We've had a community conversation last night at Ocean View. Thank you very much to the board members who were able to attend that. We've had a hearing with some great feedback from individuals who brought up some very good points for us to consider. And I know that Dr. Boone and the administration has ongoing conversations with the staff of the schools as well in the. So the next portion of our meeting is going to be dedicated to this conversation. As everyone knows, we have, we have another community meeting that's going to be happening simultaneously during our business meeting. That's at Norview High School. And we will have further discussion on February the 6th at our business meeting. And then probably have some time at our February 20th during the workshop to just, you know, finalize any points or answer any final questions that board members would have. The goal is to have a vote around February 20th at that business meeting. So I see that Mr. Richter has arrived, and Dr. Boone, I'll let you start this discussion.
Thank you, Dr. Gabriel. You framed it very well in terms of what we want to share, some, some conversation, some updates, perhaps answers some questions that have been posed during the public hearing, clarify some things, and, and then talk about where we're headed. We've been very pleased with participation at the public hearing, at the community forums. Tracy, certainly Mr. Richter, will talk about what, how the survey is coming together in terms of responses and, and that information. So I'll just turn it right over to Dr. Bailey and Mr. Richter.
Thank you, Dr. Boone, and good afternoon, Chair Gabrielle and members of the board. We have had two public hearings so far. Certainly, the first public hearing was on Lake Taylor Middle during the fall of last year. Our second hearing was last week. At the first hearing, we had probably about 25 speakers. And at this particular hearing last week, we had about 23. The majority of the speakers did speak about Lake Taylor Middle. However, there were some comments about school start time and concerns expressed. And with respect to Lake Taylor Middle, there were a handful that definitively said they would like to see us to explore, looking at a 3-8, and then with the thoughts of moving pre-K to second grade to Fairlawn. There were some suggestions about transitioning into Lake Taylor by grade level. And then other concerns were about Lake Taylor Middle being ADA compliant, the younger children being on buses, as you have heard before. And then asking or suggesting that we either close down Lake Taylor Middle for a year for planning or certainly to create a new building that we have done for Crossroads and Campus Stellup STEM School. The school start time, and then I'll transition over to Mr. Richter. There again, a handful definitively said they would like to see a change in the start time, certainly to support the health and attendance and improve academic achievement for students. The concerns that were expressed primarily about after-school programs, before and after-school programs, how would that work out? And then there was a suggestion that we collect additional feedback from teachers. Mr. Richter?
Thank you. Well, thanks again for having me today. I don't have a formal presentation because what we've been doing is just, we don't have anything completed yet. We're in the middle of everything we're doing. So have you been a part of also? I will start also with Lake Taylor and Fairlawn and Popular Halls and Easton. We had a meeting last night with staff, as was requested also. I felt on the facility side, it was a very successful meeting as far as communication. We went back over kind of how we got to where we are, and that was important, to set that baseline once again, this couple-year process of the discussion that's been going on. Then we talked about being in the space, what types of space, what needs to get done in order for it to happen. The feedback we got from staff on facilities was, was clear. We don't want to go into a building on a promise. If we're going to do this, let's get the things done that need done. And then, and I don't think they're uncomfortable with that. They're, and as have anybody, their concern was clarity, communication, making sure that we know what's going to happen and when it's going to happen. And if we can't get those things done, then this would not be a comfortable move. And we get that. I feel like if, if facilities can build trust, this is a really good opportunity to set a line in the sand and say, delivered on promises made for this. And, and to get that moving forward for renovation projects, which you know are very hard. I did communicate with them. I think the biggest challenge would be restrooms for younger grade levels in a, in a short period of time. So we had a meeting today to follow up with, with our internal planning group. And Danny and I talked about making sure that we get one of, one of the architects that we have kind of in the stable waiting to, to get some work done, go and evaluate the building, to see how much time it would take and to get us more definitive answers on those space types. So I felt like the feedback we got from staff last night was positive on that. But they were very clear with us, and we don't disagree. So I was able to take a tour this morning of Fairlawn, just really to see the guts of it. And I was able to even go out to Easton this morning, which was awesome too. First of all, I want to tell you, and I'm going to divert for a second, these buildings are immaculate. They are beautiful buildings because of the staff and leadership in these buildings. You walk in them, the floors are shiny and the walls are decorated, and there is beautiful things happening in these buildings. I was thrilled, and frankly, for me, I don't get to walk schools very often anymore. It's part of the core of who I am, it inspired me again. So I was excited to walk in there, welcomed by both staffs, it was pretty, it was awesome. So I appreciate them accommodating us and the people that walked through this morning, so I want to pass that along. So I think that the, the spaces are great, we can do what we need to do. And I think as long as we can keep up the communication with staff, that's what they want to hear, and if we can get it done. We will have an update. So on the 4th, we're going to meet internally again, and we've asked to have some updates on some of those things with the facilities for, for that internal meeting, so we can get it to you for your update in both February meetings for you. Anything else on Lake Taylor that you can think of right now? Okay, any questions on the Lake Taylor for that?
Go ahead, Dr. Bailey, and then I'll go to Ms. Camson.
The one thing I wanted to address, comments that were made the year closing to do the major renovations like that were done at ADL, there were no major renovations done at Academy for Discovery at Lakewood. We went back and researched what facility things went on. There, for a period of time, they had a temporary cooling tower there, but that was addressed, not related to the ADL. Primarily, the building received deep cleaning, painting, removal of some lockers. And then subsequent, reusing the foundations that the lockers had been positioned on, and so kind of made those hallway benches, that type of thing. So they, you know, the comment was that, you know, in terms of getting the building ready. They did install elementary playground equipment there. There were no bathroom modifications. The home ec room was, was repurposed because home ec was not going to be part of the program of studies there. During that year that the building was closed, it was, the climate of the building was maintained as though it was an actively used building. So it wasn't like we had to ramp the building back up. And there were some repairs done, auditorium seats. So just wanted to be clear for the board, when the comment was made, the year to do the major renovations to the school, there weren't major renovations done.
Camson?
Could you talk a little bit to the idea of the advantage of a K-8 versus a 3-8? Because that was a message I heard very clearly from parents, is that the 3-8, the older elementary kids, people were pretty comfortable with. But there were a lot of concerns about the little kids, they'll eventually be there anyway. It's a pathway school. So, I mean, the current fifth graders at Fairlawn will be there next year anyway. So, but there was a lot of concern. And there were a lot of concerns about, because they need more renovations there to put kindergarten. They didn't have to have those renovations at, at Academy. They didn't have to have those renovations at Academy for Discovery because they did not put anyone below. Third graders are fine with the bathroom. So, I mean, they were, I was leaning toward their thoughts because it sounded like a good idea. It means that we would only be closing one building, and I said this to you last night, instead of two, because the Easton piece wouldn't go, and we know our declining enrollment is demanding that we do do some building closures so we can use the money we have to continue to educate the children we have left. But what are you seeing as advantages and disadvantages? Because that's a big thing for me to think about when I go to vote.
Absolutely, and I think that's legitimate because we heard it from the community also. I think there are several statements there. I can speak from the facility and the demographic side, that I think that even in a, for me, transitionally, it works because we've still got those two big classes that got, that are going to push out. And so, we knew we'd be a little tight next year, and depending on kind of what the transition would do, that following year, we would have more space to be able to accommodate. And so, it would take the pressure off of, and there was plenty of space in there with the full transition, but accommodations would have been made with still some of the portables out there, ideally, and some work's gone into those portables. So, ideally, you don't use those portables in that. That's one thing. Certainly, Fairlawn is, can accommodate, it always has been an elementary school, and it certainly can accommodate it. For me, it's not a matter of on a facilities or demographic side of making it work because it does work. And, and again, the Easton property is, again, they do amazing things with it. So, I mean, it's, I wasn't expecting when I saw, when I walked into Easton, what I saw. And so, that can work, too. For me, it's a matter of going back to the division, saying it's, it's an academic and curriculum discussion to have. From a facility side, we can make it work, and from a demographic side, it works. It's just going back to the idea of how you want to pair a school or do that, and that's where I can leave it.
If I can do the companion piece to that question, I think, again, we can make it work. I think the district, though, does have significant history in implementation of K-8 without the challenges of the younger students with the older students. Just a quick historical piece, and I know Ms. Camson is very familiar with this, is that Gant being the district's first K-8 school had those mixed ages there. A small school and designed to accommodate those students. And so, with, with Crossroads being the second K-8 in the district, that's experience that we've had, again, without the significant challenges of how the grade levels are separated in terms of age-appropriate interactions. And so, I think that's, we do have some history of both 3-8 and K-8, and so, I think we understand what it takes for those to be successful in mixing their ages.
And you know, Dr. Boone, that when Gant opened, I was there when we opened, it opened as a grade three to six school, did not have primary grades in the school at the time it opened. It was, it opened starting with, paired with the old Pretty Lakes School, which was a K-2 school, which is now gone. And so, it did start out as a grade three up school.
Perfect segue.
You've been around long enough, you know all the history. What can I say? I started working here when I was three.
Thank you for that benefit. And so, that's a perfect segue to the other challenge, is why do we pair? And that's the question that I constantly have to ask us. Are we pairing for academic goals? Are we pairing for facility goals? I remain concerned with the pairing that was done probably six, seven years ago now. Poplar and Fairlawn being two of the four schools that became paired, PB Young and Ty Water being the other two. Programmatically, we did not hit a home run with pairing for those schools.
I agree.
Very clearly. And so, my concern with pairing based on facilities or perceptions that the ages can't be integrated appropriately. I do have concerns of what we create academically in that piece, because, yes, we've had a mixed bag of results. The Fairlawn-Poplar halls pairing worked, but the district as a whole created a structure without an infrastructure for success in pairing schools. So, I give that to the leadership of those schools that made it work, you know, and different set of constructs, and perhaps PB Young and Ty Water. And so, that's my reticence, if you will. It's not about can we do it, not about facilities and what that'll do. It's just why are we pairing? And given our successful history of K-8s, you know, I do, I am concerned with what that means.
Okay. Ms. Bassin, Ms. Martin, Mr. Platten.
So, I'm still where, was the last time we talked about this, because I'm not, as part of this discussion, and for me to be comfortable with the vote, I need to understand what we're, not just understand in words, you know, what we're going to do at Southside STEM Academy, but we also have this uncertainty with Roughner, and these are all populations that I think could impact Lake Taylor K-8. So, what we're doing at Roughner, what we're doing at Lake Taylor High School, because these are all going to feed potentially into that high school, and also what recommendations are going to come forward from the Specialty Task Program's Task Force, which may shift students around if, you know, and I honestly don't know. I'm just, I guess that's the piece. I don't know. So, I find it difficult to, to feel confident in a decision around Lake Taylor K-8 without knowing those pieces, and not knowing how those pieces will then help us achieve our goal of, you know, reducing poverty in our schools.
So, let me share some thoughts, and certainly Ms. Chavis and Dr. Bailey, Mr. Richter, and others can chime in. As I do not support us closing Lake Taylor Middle and zoning those students to Roughner, I think that's counter to everything we've talked about in terms of the proudly diverse community and how we get better equity and better socioeconomic diversity in our schools. So, I go on record that I am not in favor of any, of that being one of our options. We put it out there because in transparency, yes, this is something that could be done, but it's something I do not endorse and would not recommend to the board. The, the Southside STEM Academy gets to that same conversation. What are the zoning aspects that we will put in place that would allow us to address the socioeconomic mix in that, and how do we get there? And of course, you know, we've had this conversation, the collective board, I know not the current configuration, but with the board since December of 15, and truthfully, an opportunity was missed by the district when the same level of planning for the Southside in terms of its attendance and everything else wasn't done by the administration in a meaningful way that allowed that year. They, too, were physically out of a building while new construction was going on. The planning did not occur in turn, with the same fidelity that it did for ADL, for Southside STEM, and thus, we were met with that gap and a building that was going to open in about four or five months. And so, that's the historical piece of how we got in there. And so, the question is, you know, how do we make significant changes to address that? If, if, you know, in terms of the board's desire with that. Programmatically, you know, again, we have done a great deal with strengthening the implementation of a true STEM focus at Southside STEM Academy, both with the leadership selection, with the training for the staff, the activities and things that are going on, and we finally see that progress and movement of that becoming a version, the foundation for potential for a strong STEM school emerging. We have been working for the last several months with a programmatic focus for Roughner. We aren't ready to go prime time with that today, but do know we are working very closely, very diligently with an outside partner to help us develop what would be a strong programmatic focus for Roughner, and that would also impact that entire pathway, that feeder pattern of particularly from Lake Taylor, whether it's the K-8, and on through both middle schools that feed into Lake Taylor High School. We've shared with you previously the work that has been going on when the pivot was made to Bogota T, potentially as the host for the campus of CTE High School. We started working very closely with how do we strengthen and contemporize what goes on with this ROTC Military Leadership Focus with the goal of doing more things, particularly around logistics and artificial intelligence. So, that infrastructure work is emerging. And so, we have been very clear on how we approach this and not leaving it to chance. I would say the only thing that has not been fully vetted to bring back to the board a recommendation is what do we do with the current attendance pattern for Southside STEM at Campus Stella, and what do we do to, to address the greater socioeconomic diversity in that building? And Ms. Chavis has joined us. I don't know if you want to add anything else in the pathway, act, program academic work that we're doing.
We've actually had, we meet quarterly, or at least every, each, and I apologize for my voice, but we've been meeting quarterly with the staff at Southside STEM regarding the STEM component of that school, as we meet with all schools regarding the, just, you know, the academic piece as well. However, specifically with the STEM piece, we've been meeting with them to, one, determine what additional needs they have, whether it's resources or professional development, to fully implement a STEM program there. We met a few weeks prior to the winter break, and we are scheduling for the current administration and some of the teachers to go visit another STEM school, one that may have been visited prior to that school opening, but with a change in leadership and a change in staff, getting them to a point where they're also creating partnerships with other STEM schools to be able to implement some of the things happening. They are still moving forward and strong with their C-Peach after-school program. There's a first mate program that occurs there. They've actually done some redesign of their units and planning with CTE and our science department, and the progress, and the process now of implementing some, and gearing up for some changes next school year as they look for greater unit development around the STEM focus. Teachers are feeling at the 3-5, actually K-2, they're feeling pretty comfortable with the integration, particularly with technology and the STEM focus, still working through the 3-5 piece, and strengthening that a bit more with professional development in particular. And the middle school with their new CTE teacher this year, new to the school, is also working closely with our teacher over at Rosemont to help build his capacity, well, not capacity, but his toolkit to working with middle school students in the area of STEM. So, there's a lot of work going on at the academy, and as Dr. Boone has said, we're continuing to, to build on the foundation, to make it an even stronger program. And so, each of the two years, two and a half now that I've been back in the district, I've seen a change in the planning and the implementation of a true STEM program to include project lead the way it's part of that, not the sole component, but it's one of the components to, to the STEM program there.
Ms. Martin.
I just want to share where my, some of my thoughts that I've had, especially since last Wednesday's public comment on the, the changes to Lake Taylor Middle School, and I just want to give kudos to Mr. Wayne on bringing up the third through eighth. I think it's a brilliant idea, and of course, with your verification that the facilities would be able to accommodate that, I think that's, it just encourages me more. And I think in doing that, what it does is it aligns the grades with what we had done, established with ADL as being a third through eighth. And I just would like to take it one step further in establishing a very, a program, a curriculum in the middle years at Lake Taylor that would be STEM-related. And some of the thoughts I've had, obviously, this would be a discussion, something y'all can talk about, is to really take this opportunity, especially in some of the environmental issues that we're facing here, and, and make it a, an environmental resilience curriculum. And I was just thinking about the location and, you know, possibly have, I mean, these are just my ideas, not being an expert in curriculum, but just, I just got really excited thinking about all of the possibilities there. They have a lot of land, so they could even practice, you know, lead architecture, things like that, that could really grow into something, especially tying into maybe a CTE curriculum and, and helping our community. I mean, it's something that we talk about as workforce development, what are the needs in our community, and there are just so many ways that this seemed to, to tie in. Also, I was inspired visiting the Brock Center and its proximity to the Brock Center and to the water, and it, and so, I, I'm not sure what type of national programs. I know NOAA has a grant that could possibly help us get this off the ground, but I'm really excited about this potential opportunity to make Lake Taylor Middle School a desired school, and, and just how it could tie that STEM piece in and then move that, you know, kind of make that, obviously, we have the STEM school at the elementary level, make it the middle school level, and that, tie that into vocation and STEM at the high school level as well.
Okay. Ms. Camson. Oh, I'm sorry, hold on. Mr. Platten. Sorry.
Mr. Richter, going back to, I guess, the last presentation you had, there were some figures that we had as far as dollars in regards to renovations to the building here. Just for clarity for me here, we just kind of had a buzzer presentation, and I think you're kind of jumping in at some point, but where are we anticipating in getting the dollars to renovate this building? I just remember last week walking through, and as you, a term that you used, they had good bones.
Yeah.
Some of those bones, since to some aspect for individuals outside may say they're a little old. They're strong, but they're a little old, and as far as trying to make it an inviting environment for students, particularly in our, like you said, the, what you experienced at Fairlawn and at Easton, to kind of brighten that up in there, where are we anticipating in getting those dollars from? And I guess also with caveat to that timing, when are we looking at doing that, especially when we're talking about potentially opening up this building in this new format in the fall?
So, on the funding part, I can't exactly tell you, although I know that there are dollars currently allocated for Poplar Halls, for that are capital dollars, for roof replacement, those, those would not be used. And so, I think, and I have to look, but I thought that was somewhere in the neighborhood of $2 million that was set aside in capital for that. And, you know, Danny's also looking at other things that had deferred maintenance that he's trying to do at those schools, they may be able to shift over, too. Again, one of the things about not having the kindergarten and bathrooms, I mean, bathrooms are expensive, there's just no question. I think that, I think the, the idea of inviting is something to think about, and how do you do that with, which is some cosmetic, obviously, and it does need refresh. It is, it just feels a little old. I think you walk into Fairlawn, it's, what you like about Fairlawn is that, and this is the amazing difference, Easton and Fairlawn are the same school. They're the exact same school. Walk into Fairlawn and look at the lighting down the hallway, and you see this new lighting that got lit sometime. Go into Easton, and you see the single strip bulb lights, and notice the difference in just the hallways. Lighting can make all the difference, and it's an inexpensive solution to invitation. And so, I think it's things like that that will help do that. I also think, again, one of the big things that we need to address at Lake Taylor, and this, this needs to be addressed regardless, is that looking at that special ed space, that self-contained, the low mobility, those students that have high need, and that space needs to be done if you were doing nothing in this. And so, and the back of the building actually offers the most opportunity, I think, that can do that. By, by taking out offices in those back that got, that got created for a lot of reasons, recreating that into state-of-the-art, art space, and then converting special ed maybe to the other end of the building that has about 4,000 square feet instead of about 1,500 square feet, and making that more tech space that's adjacent to the career tech space, makes that a whole creative area. That's inviting, that's welcoming, that's saying, look, we want you to explore, we want you to do these things all together. And then, having the right space for special needs is critical to this mission. And then, in the front of the building, I think then, we have some science adjustments for the middle grades on that first floor, but it's already art space. Plumbing's there, that's important. So, it's some sinks, furniture, and I think that by doing those things on the, and those are the, those are the programmatic enhancements that automatically say, education matters. And so, I think that there's some other, I mean, there's going to be some mechanical things that you're going to look at. I think that the building still has needs. There's no question. We have identified those needs in the, in the We have identified those needs in the condition assessment. But I think the dollars that we have set, and again, I think with an architect getting in there to make sure that we can do those within that budget, those would be the first priorities in there. And I think we can make it work.
So just to clarify for me here, so this board makes a decision in February, sending a signal to the administration to begin, I guess, what we would, the continuation of the planning for these cosmetic activities to take place over the summer and I guess building up to, would that be done by the time the school opens? Is that what we're saying?
If the board takes action in February, that would allow facilities then to begin to do the spec work. And as Mr. Richter said, with the architects going back in there, we can begin to spec and put bids out for work, some work that could begin, perhaps some exterior work that began during the school year while school is in session, but have everything ready to go that the day the students are out of there, we're ready to roll the next day. And so that's, that's how we would do that type of refresh. If we don't have to do bathroom in terms of changing fixture sizes, lowering commodes or lowering sinks, then that's, that's a chunk of work that, that would save time and allow the work to go to other places.
We could potentially phase in bathrooms at a later date, right?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So my, because my whole thing is this, like when you mentioned about, you know, what a wonderful space that our younger students are experiencing at these particular schools. I just don't want that to be a dramatic shift when you come into a different location and then it's kind of like, you know.
Yeah.
But also with that, I'm just anticipating that in February, I guess, six or at that point, a discussion, that we're going to have a formal proposal. And I think we kind of hear that this is what we want you to take action on. I know we have this idea, but this is, you know, from the recommendation, from what we've heard back from the community. And also with that, when it, I kind of had, when we would, as a board, see the survey results, is that what we're saying on February sixth would be the time?
Well, yes, that's it. But the survey is for school start time.
School start time.
Survey is not for the Lake Taylor.
But aren't we also taking action on that as well in February?
Yes, but we, right, we were just doing the K-8 piece at the moment. But yes, we would be updating on everything we have. So the updated facility needs would be at the work session on the sixth, as well as everything that, by then we will have completed the faculty meetings. We will have completed the, tonight's community forum. We would have done an analysis of the results from the surveys and all of that.
And just my final piece, and Ms. Campson will kick it over to you, is about the, I cannot reiterate what you mentioned earlier, the clarity and communication, both internally and externally. And I know that we've got some tools that are out there that we're using. But again, as a board, would very much reiterate, seeing a comprehensive communication plan for this entire project all the way to the time that we're opening schools. So I'd just like to put that back out there. I know that we've heard it's being built, but I don't think that I, well, I don't think that I've seen it as a board member, but it's just, if we can get it just to, you know, so that we're all, because we're part of that plan, just making sure that we're reiterating that, that's all.
I will say, we can certainly lead it up to where we are at a vote on February 20th. And we can create the framework of what it looks like from there until the close of school. We certainly can't fully populate it until we know which decisions are being made.
Exactly, yeah. I think Ms. Smith was.
I had not, but I'll take it. I want to give everybody one chance to speak. So Ms. Smith?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, all right.
I am definitely comfortable with potentially converting Fair Lawn. I have great reservations with converting Lake Taylor. One of my primary concerns with Lake Taylor is dealing with it from a capacity perspective. I'd like to see us address, and you mentioned it earlier, Dr. Boone, the academic piece, but not just the academic piece at Lake Taylor, but also the other middle schools like STEM roughener. And looking at this from a holistic perspective, and how can we get the best out of what we're doing for all of those schools and not just one, or dealing with each one individually? But in this plan that we're about to embark upon, or that we've already embarked upon, how can we make this great for all of them?
And I couldn't agree more. And that's why I wanted to share, you know, in response to Ms. Bessine's earlier comment and questions of what's in planning. Like I said, we aren't ready to go primetime yet because negotiations require and building that infrastructure. But you can expect to see that coming forward soon in terms of what we're putting in place and how we intend to leverage it around middle schools that haven't been successful.
Okay. And then just one question about the pre-K or preschool at Poplar Halls. Where are the plans for them, or what are the plans for them?
The pre-K at Poplar Halls is dependent upon two things. If Easton becomes located at Fair Lawn, pre-K from Poplar Halls would become part of that, allowing us to have a greater flexibility for integrating disabled and non-disabled pre-K students in the similar learning environment, which is something we are always challenged with accomplishing around the board because Easton is pretty much disabled preschool students only. And our VPI classrooms don't necessarily serve students with identified disabilities. So they tend to be separate. So that would allow us to do that. If the board moves closer to the three-eight proposal, thinking for Lake Taylor Middle, then pre-K would be part of Fair Lawn. And that would be pre-K two and go in that frame. So that's how the pre-K would be addressed. But it would not, I don't think it would create the space that would be needed for supporting Easton at Fair Lawn if we keep pre-K two there.
I actually, I was with, is it Dr. White? Yeah, that's what, I won't be respectful of that. So she has basically four available spaces at Easton that she could create. I think where, logistically, transportation doesn't yet support that general ed to get like a Poplar Halls over there. And obviously, the integration into an elementary school is very good too. They're both good options. So you have either option in front of you.
Yeah.
So you've got some flexibility in decisions.
And over time, Easton has become a challenge with access.
Yes.
Certainly, we transport students and some families, you know, transport their children. But the access, in particular with all the I-264 work that has occurred, access is a challenge for Easton.
So when we started down this path some years ago and we talked about creating more socio-economically diverse schools, a lot of folks laughed and doubted and said it couldn't be done. And I think what we learned from the work thus far, I don't think three through eight is what makes ADL, ADL. There's a diverse group of students and parents and supportive staff. And parents and the supportive staff demand certain things. Politicians and administrations respond to what those parents demand. And I think we see that at ADL. We see that again. When we look at our data, we can see clear data that, at least I think I see clear data, the more socio-economically diverse our schools, the better our outcomes, even though we know that there are gaps within those, within those schools. Historically, what occurs is when it comes time to make those types of market-driven decisions on behalf of low-income students in predominantly African-American neighborhoods, we don't have that core conviction and willingness to stand and stick to it to achieve similar results. So for example, we've talked about the K through eight with this educational planning. I remember, and this goes to the Lake Taylor Middle School piece, we said on the, for Southside STEM and for ADL and for all our K-8s, we wouldn't have comprehensive athletics. There were certain things you could only receive in a comprehensive middle school. We, we've at Southside STEM, we have inequities between what we have permitted at ADL and what we have not permitted at Southside STEM. That's not a slight on anyone. I'm just simply saying that we have to be truly committed to that equity. So for me, when we're having the conversation around the declining enrollment at Lake Taylor Middle, I feel that part of the declining enrollment at Lake Taylor Middle and the impact on Lake Taylor Middle is a result of our failure to uphold the guiding principles that we had as relates to Southside STEM Academy. So to me, if we are, if we would treat it as a serial relationship or a domino, that we have to, in my opinion, the Southside STEM Academy demographic model correct. And we have to get a clear understanding of what is allowed in our K-8s, or three-eights, or whatever eights that we do and what's not. Because the hope was, is that we would have had the socio-economic diversity layered on top of this top-notch program at Southside STEM, which would still give parents and others options between what you may want in a full-fledged middle school program at Lake Taylor Middle, which may not be available to you at the K-8, three-eight model. So to me, we've kind of blended it, mixed it all together, plus making the decision that, where my expectation was that the middle school default in the Southside STEM attended zone was going to be Lake Taylor, if we made the middle school default Southside STEM. So I still feel we have to, at least I would like to see us, address that, fully support and implement that model, whatever that model may be, see what is, to the extent we can, project what its impact would be on Lake Taylor Middle. Because history tells me if we go forward and do Lake Taylor Middle first, we will never go back and do Southside STEM. So Mr. Richter, when you were speaking of the staff's interest in trying to see commitment around facilities, I don't think it's just around facilities. It's around programmatic jump and changing around. And frankly, at the policy level, at the board level, where we will commit to something, but then we don't fully implement that commitment. So, and I think that's where we are with, with Southside STEM. So I still like to see, for me in terms of action on the Lake Taylor K-8, is what that plan is going to be for Southside STEM and getting that correct so that we continue down the path that we are creating better socio-economically diverse schools of choice. Whether that choice is, as you said, Mr. Richter, whether that's your neighborhood school is your choice or whether that some other school is your, is your choice. And I don't think we're there yet. And I think we still need to go deeper before we continue to go, to go wide. And similarly, I think with the CTE school at Booker T., we had some momentum going there. We've, I'm not sure where we are with that, but that's another opportunity, and I agree with Ms. Martin, that's another opportunity to have some strong programmatic pieces that ties to our work here in Norfolk and continue to address the goals that we have. But I see a similar pattern now, I don't mean this with these recommendations, but just historically, that, you know, we've been trying 30 years with concentrate poverty at school, we'll throw a program on it, we'll commit to funding. The funding drives up, the program goes away, and we are just right back with the same model that we had. We can talk about when we did it at the middle schools in 2001, we did it at elementary schools in 86. And I want us to make sure that we're going to do something different now. And that's what the educational planning principles were intended to make sure that we didn't follow through with fidelity.
And, and again, I couldn't agree more. I'm sorry the district missed that window when Camp Estella was under construction because they actually had a couple of years. Whereas we had one year for ADL, we actually had a couple of years planning to do the demographic work and the program work, water under the bridge and.
We give Tom Brady one last drive.
We take it, we take it down the field and over the, okay, all right.
I'm just trying to say, one last drive.
Time. We're going to, Ms. Campson, Ms. Bessine quickly, and then I'm going to.
I might make it like, I have a 6:30 meeting I have.
Yeah, he has a, so we have, we still have the school start time discussion also. So if you all don't mind your comments.
I actually, yeah, I'm fine, yeah. I just, I'll do real quick. I did have some comments for, for Mr. Jordan really fast that weren't my initial thing, because I think he's dead right on what happened at STEM. And we all know it and, and it's something that we should be looking at at the same time. However, I don't think that we can stop moving forward across the whole district. We're, you know, our enrollment is declining. It's expensive to run these half-empty buildings. Certainly, we were asking the city for extra money. They're going, well, you know, what are y'all doing with all these half-empty schools? So I think that we need as, maybe as a board to have a better discussion because he is so right about, I mean, every time I think about STEM, it makes me upset because it was such a wonderful dream and it was not executed the way we hoped. And certainly at the preparation level. So I totally, he's absolutely right. But I don't want us to stop forward motion because we have a lot of things we have to do with, we have the pressure of a declining enrollment. It's not going to change. We have that pressure with us. All right. So I, we need to figure out a way to make it happen at the same time, Tracy. All right. And the reason I wanted to say something real quick is back to the K-8, three-eight. I'm getting more and more a three-eight person. We need to give them a brand. I like Ms. Martin's idea about environmental, look into the idea of service learning. I'd like to see it become a service learning school with, and with an environmental emphasis would be fine with me because that's a great place to do service learning. Service learning being different from community service, and that community service, you go out and you do wonderful things for the community, and schools have been doing that forever. Service learning model, which is done at Ocean View, is you go out and you're doing things for the community, but it's integrated with the, with the curriculum. And when you're doing that, you're also integrating with, with your writing and your math and your science, all the things that they do there. We could take that service learning model, which is mostly, it was environmental, but it's mostly maritime there. And if you take that branding, and that's just one suggestion for branding, that would be a place that would draw people too. So I, that's, I'm supporting everyone tonight. I like both their ideas, but I really would like us to do something about getting to work on what, what Mr. Jordan is saying because we need to do something. And I didn't realize, so one of the K, the eight-three schools gets to do athletics, for example, and another one does not? Is that what you're saying?
It's the same, Southside STEM and Crossroads have the same model.
Okay.
What's going on with athletics.
But, oh, okay, okay. And I won't get into that because I know we're out of time and I know Ms. Bessine has something to say.
Quick question. Can Fair Lawn accommodate Poplar Halls while we work out the middle piece? Okay.
Not, not quite. I think we would be pressuring.
Or Fair Lawn and Easton while we work it out?
Well, actually, because, you know, Easton's, and this is, this kind of goes on the radar. You know, Easton's class size is eight to one. So at eight students, people think with 150 students, that how can it be full at a building that's the same size as Fair Lawn? It's a matter of that. So I haven't done that, so I can't give you a definite answer. But I know the Fair Lawn Poplar Hall doesn't work. And it's just, I think we would be jeopardizing space and I think we would be putting dollars over there with portable movement and all that too. It's just, I think there's some negatives on that one. They just don't quite fit.
Real quick. I just want to point out that we talk about, and we know from research, the benefits of small class sizes. And we're talking about smaller school environments and we end up focusing on facilities and not academics. And so always I would like for us to keep academics at the forefront. I just find that an interesting piece, that we talk about closing schools and the academic piece around it is not supported in research. And we know that from what we see. it is not supported in research, and we know that from what we see. And it's interesting that everyone else around us who is funding us, you know, have their children in schools where small class sizes is what was enticing to them. But yet, we are, we have large class sizes, we know that that's an issue with morale, we know it's an issue for families, and at some point, like, we had to put what we know about strong academics first before facilities, and so just, you know, I get that, I get that piece, but, you know, it's...
I'm a huge fan of neighborhood schools. I think it builds trust with the neighborhood. I think your school is the center stone for a community. It's where they can gather, have social capital. They can become more than just neighbors, but support, supportive of each other. So it breaks my heart, actually, to be having a decision where we have to take away an elementary school, because that's where we usually have the most involvement, parent-wise. And however, reality being what it is, we have decisions that we have to make as a board. And as a part of my decision-making, I would like to know if we keep Fair Lawn open as a pre-K two center, and if we were to do a three-eight model at Lake Taylor Middle, what would be the number of classes, kindergarten and pre-K, that we would be able to host at Fair Lawn? And then at Lake Taylor, what would be the classes that we would estimate there? And, you know, we, we haven't discussed program there either, which I also would support. You always have to put your academics at the forefront. You know, what I'm hearing here is that we, we, we are having to make a decision because of a point in time that we are at in order to be able to take action for the division to do certain things to the school. But in the grand scheme, we do need to come back as a board and kind of have what we had beforehand with our master milestones discussion, where we talk big picture, and let the academic and the overarching goals really drive the decisions that we make. And if things aren't meeting those expectations, then they're, they're not considered unless it's a make or break kind of situation. So I need, I would like to have that information, Dr. Boone.
So I would refer us back to the original presentations we've done. Using, Southside not part of this, using Papa Halls, Fair Lawn, and Lake Taylor Middle current configuration, you would see the number of proposed classrooms in those presentations. So the number of kindergarten classes, barring any drastic change of enrollment, would be the same as they currently are. We always do that enrollment caveat. It's one of the HR conversations. Remind the board, because we are not trying to blend two K five schools with different enrollments, but rather, we are trying to consolidate paired schools that have different grade configurations. It's, it's not like we're trying to say, okay, we got this number of kindergarten classes at one school and this number at the other, now how many will we have at the new school? So in the information we've given, we've provided the number of, the current number of kindergarten, first, second, third grade, fourth grade classrooms. That doesn't shift, even if it becomes a three-eight. That doesn't shift, because we, we're not bringing together the same grade levels from two different schools. It's just where they're housed.
Okay. So would we be able to offer any additional preschool classes at Fair Lawn if we did it as a pre-K two center?
That we would have to go back and check, because...
Yeah, that's, that's really what my question is.
Okay, that's a different question. Okay.
I, I see where you're going with that. Okay, that's fair.
We, we, we can certainly look at that and, and see if we can.
And just as a side note, with Academy for Discovery, I just have to say that, since I was a part of the planning piece for that, the SPMT, there was a lot of thought that went into planning that school. And I don't want to take away from the fact that Mr. Smigle, the principal there, put a lot of energy into the program. He was given the task pre-IB, and then he took it and he ran with it. And that is with staffing, that is with culture, that is with what he has identified as strong traits that makes a school desirable. So, Mr. Jordan, I agree that it's the socioeconomic diversity that gives its school so much richness, but it is also the building leader. And, you know, just like in a medical program, or any, you know, dynamic program, it starts with that person who is going to set the culture for the building.
I don't disagree with you. I think what, what I was making, I think what some of the folks who were suggesting that we close down for a year, is that it gave that time to do that work and to do that by...
No, you're right. And it was important to get that work done, the training, everything that went in.
And if I can build a bridge between the two, I'll go back to my statement. That time was available for Southside STEM. The district missed this opportunity. It was not done with the same level of due diligence for Southside STEM as it was for ADL.
They didn't have a principal that had the whole year to get it ready. They had a principal that was having two different campuses to go to.
But, but, like I say, I, I agree, but if the district had had the will to make it happen, as it did ADL, then it would have happened.
All I'm requesting is that we have the will now.
Now.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I think we need to have the will, and, and what I've done is, is we need to plan some time to have that bigger picture discussion. We do. And to see how all of the pieces fit together, because planning in isolation doesn't work with the academic goals that we just talked about, was it last week? Not, not that long ago. So, but what we're going to do is, we're going to wrap up this discussion. We have, we can do a few minutes on school start time, and you've gotten board feedback as to what we need for the February sixth meeting, and we'll make sure that we have time allocated for that school start times.
Okay, so, as many of you know, we released a, a public survey on the website with great communications efforts. To the point, it's last Thursday we released the survey, I believe it was Thursday evening. As of noon today, we had twelve hundred and twenty-eight responses online.
Great.
That is better than, that, that's ten times better than we've done anywhere.
Go parents.
So it's, we get a lot, but I will tell you, but here's what's happening, is that the communication plan was great. It's been on the news networks, it's been on the website, it's been blasted out to parents, to, to civic organizations from the task, from the steering committee that have connected to those. We're getting a lot of response. The response actually is that we've had, of those twelve hundred, five hundred parents, four hundred and eighty-two teachers, a hundred and twenty-four students have responded to this, and a hundred and eighteen, well, other, they just don't, they're not sure where they are, but they're somewhere.
Fake holders.
But what we're getting, and I think this is the general response we're getting, so last night, we had a community meeting, not a big turnout, but I love the way we did an elementary last night and a high school tonight, because the conversation changes a bit when you're talking to elementary parents and to high school parents. And as the same conversation I've had with those elementary parents, God willing, this miracle happens that their elementary kids someday become high school kids. And your thoughts change, too, when it comes to the delivery services and how that's addressed in, with your child. It was very clear last night in discussions with the community about anecdotal things versus real data things.
Yeah.
The anecdotal things are, and those happen, and they're real. My daughter has three hours of gymnastics practice after school. Kids are on social media too much. Oh, okay. We're not changing the culture of the world, because, I mean, that just happens. But we went back to the research and went back to the research, and even when we found the discussion with the elementary parents last night, it was interesting that they're for it. They're, they're not necessarily for the time. I mean, it was seven-thirty that was bothering them a little bit.
Some were.
Yeah, and, but they were like, it's better for their work life because of day, early morning daycare, and trying to find early morning daycare, and the cost of early morning daycare, those kind of things that emerged as best practice over the anecdotal things of, of every day. So the things like, what about the people who are tardy now for school when it starts at eight fifty-five? That's anecdotal. That is a behavior that we're not in charge of. And so that just, those are things that we cannot, we cannot get to. So we go back to research, and we go back to research. Now, what I'm finding interesting about the survey is exactly this. When you look at the satisfaction of school start time among parents and generally teachers, but again, most of the response has come from elementary, so about sixty percent of those parents are elementary responses. And so, but, so people are generally satisfied with start time, unless you go to the students. Almost sixty percent of students are not satisfied with school start time. And when you read comments, and these are the most important, when you read comments from teachers, high school teachers and students, the voice is the same, that...
Interesting.
Early morning start time, first period is difficult to get through, and last period, because of endurance of the day, is difficult to get through. And so, again, the behavior the research shows is that we can't control when they go to bed. Even if you start schools early or late, they're going to go to bed same time. It's that end time of sleep. And so as you go through the survey, what I find fascinating is that when you ask the questions about, when research says about health and wellness, that it, that it improves health and wellness, the agreement level goes up to sixty percent, which is about twenty percentage points above satisfaction rates, and as well as performance. Agreement to that is above sixty percent, that strongly agree or agree. And then those people who don't disagree are like the twenty percent, and I don't know what they don't disagree with, with research. I don't know that answer, so I can't give you why they disagree with that. But the fact of the matter is, is that the, the agreement of those things increases significantly over satisfaction rates. And so even though people might be satisfied, it's just what they know. Okay? I can be satisfied. Well, at elementary grade level, certainly I'm satisfied with my start time today. It's eight fifty-five, and it's a, you know, I can do that. We've heard speakers talk about the adjustments of early, early childhood, the malleability of that schedule and being able to adjust and accommodate. Most parents agreed last night that their young children do our early morning risers, because it's, we all had that one child that seems to think five-thirty is a bright and early time to get up.
The normal time.
And it's a normal time to get up.
Normal time, right.
And, but we also know that at the, that the after-school activities of elementary school is not as demanding generally as it is for middle and high school grades, and we know that. And those are just, those are real. I mean, although people have their kids in, as part of it. I think that what we're trying to address in school start time now, and, oh, when they did the rankings, the top three rankings of what is the concern, or what most, what most addresses their concerns, is school performance, is academic performance, health and well-being was second, and parent work schedule was third. Now, what I found interesting, that transportation and, of the seven, transportation and athletics came in six and seven, but I also think that over fifty percent do not ride buses in the survey, is what it was. And athletics, with sixty-three percent of the respondents being elementary, don't really face athletics yet. So that might push those down because of the survey sample we have. Now, the last thing to this is that we are starting to talk about the thousand anythings that happen with school start changes. And all the way from transportation to dietary needs, one of the concerns about breakfast for young children and the early morning start time. So does that mean if it starts at seven-thirty, breakfast starts at seven-ten, and, you know, just go down the list of those dietary needs? Obviously, that, that will be something we look at. Athletics, and athletics, when people think about athletics, think, they think about lights on fields. That's not just what they're addressing. Your high schools and secondary schools go through an effort of study carols after school for student athletes, with, with the resources available to them to get, to get extra learning, resource learning. They also feed their athletes, too, and so it's a concentrated effort, and so it pushes back practice times a little bit because of those things that, and we wanted to make sure that people know that, that athletics isn't just talking about, we're going to practice in the dark. You know, any, anybody who wants to really play a sport will practice regardless what time of day it is. So, but we want to make sure that's the whole picture of athletics. So we're looking at those things. We know that Mr. Setmiller's having a meeting again on Friday with his, with his ADs and some coaches, and talking about prioritization of what athletics would do. And so they're going to report back to us for, for an update for you. But also, we think about building service, custodial services, those kind of things. We think about crossing guards. You know, what do we do with crossing guards when they have to start earlier? And so Mr. Kleimbell's had discussion with the city police department about how do we address crossing guards? Special education, knowing that special education at the elementary grade level, I think Ms. Gray brought to me a, a comment, and again, hearing from everybody, this is great, about a program at Bayview, but we're getting kids down from, you know, the south side of town that were going all the way up to the north side of the city, by Camp Allen, that are special education. Okay, so there's two classes of it. Do we need to offer that one class in the south of the city, so we don't have transportation, or do we keep resources together? That's a consideration to think about. Where's your priority? We also have joint use agreements that we have to consider, you know, with, with the city. And it's not just joint use agreements about how we use our fields and everything like that, but at the elementary grade level, where there are rec centers, we're going to demand another forty-five minutes of time at the end of the day. How do we adjust our joint use agreements and work collaboratively and in sync with the city to make sure that we are both being respectful of the joint use of all those things that happen? So that's just my kind of seven-point list. And we continue to talk internally about the thousand anythings that can happen with school start time, because if you drop one thing, then somebody sees it as not being all the way thought through. Hopefully, for those who are watching tonight or hear this, I mean, if you, if you think we're not thinking through things, crossing guard should give you an indication. We're thinking through everything that we're trying to, trying to be affected by school start time for us. I will tell you that I think the general response that's coming across is that there is, there, there seems to be a momentum for this. The biggest question we're hearing is when? And so once again, to Mr. Clayton's point, communication, timeline, clarity, all of those things will be important for implementation of school start time. It is accomplishable. There's no question it is. And I'm, I've not hidden my support for this because of the research and the continued research I do for this, and to see this. Since I've met with you, I've shared that I've, five districts that I'm working with nationally are talking about school start time at some level, because it's not just a trend, it's not just something you're doing locally. It is a national discussion about health and well-being of students. So, and we go back to that for what's best. So that's an update where we are. I'm heading over to Norview here, maybe at the risk of a speeding ticket. I'm just kidding, I won't speed, I won't do that. But I will get there, and hopefully we have a good discussion tonight. I will report that back to you. We're going to take data, we're going to try to pull data off the website next, next Monday for reporting. And if we leave it open, we'll leave it open, but we're going to try to get that point of data. I think by that point, I mean, I think, I think we're going to probably be in that mid-thousands higher for our response, which, again, thank you for communications, thank you for the staff that's gone through this, thanks for the parents and the teachers and students who have responded to this.
Mm-hmm. Great. Okay. Right. Question?
So you said next week. Do we have a hard end date so that we can push that out again to definitively tell folks?
So we had this discussion today, whether we just close the survey or just give a hard date for the data, or, and so we don't have a hard date, but Monday is when we're going to pull data for this.
I, I, I think if there's any board support and community support, that we try to push it now through Monday.
Okay.
Such that by Tuesday, then when we actually, because if we pull data through Monday, then I think it's important for us to say how many folks continue to weigh in.
Okay.
And, and what that looks like. We, we can keep it open for a few more days, but we do have to cut it off at some point in order to do the reporting.
Okay.
But I think a, a good weekend push would...
Okay. All right.
Just one question about the survey.
Sure.
Is there any geocoding or profile data that's being collected along with the survey?
So the way the survey operates is that we've, we ask kind of where they, what category they fit in, and it directionally takes you to questions specifically to that, and then asks some common questions at the end. We're able to, geographically, I'll have to double-check to see if we can track that.
Is it code or...
We can, well, frankly, with, with the survey tool we're using, IP addresses come through, and you can locate IP address on geocodes, but we don't typically do that. But we haven't asked any sort of geographical on this, but just these, these kind of questions here. The survey became pretty long. We were worried about, do I have to stick around for another page or two?
Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. We definitely have some very clear next steps, and we look forward to getting the information that we receive once that data is pulled. So our next chapter of this conversation is going to be on February the sixth. Any questions that come up between now and then, send them to Dr. Boone. She'll get them over to you. And so I, before we wrap it up, I did want to acknowledge that we had some guests from the schools here in the audience, and we had a very attentive kindergartner who, I'm just so impressed with how, I mean, I mean, by now, I would have had the Cheerios out, and, I mean, no iPad, no food, nothing. I'm so impressed. We also have our teacher of the year, our division teacher of the year from last year here, Ms. Kelly Lowe, and I certainly wanted to acknowledge her, yeah, the entire school division's teacher of the year, so, thank you.
We had joy getting to watch your class for a while, and it was quite impressive.
Yes, yes, it's, it's wonderful. So we really thank you all for taking the time to come, and I know you're, you're representing a, a bigger group, but to come out on a, on a work... a, a bigger group, but to come out on a, on a work night is very special, we wanted to say something, kudos to the little man here for his great, great behavior, good job. Okay, we are going to take a recess and come back at around 6 o'clock and start our closed session.
Do the motion, ma'am?
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll, let's do our motion to go into, no, we'll, we'll come back and do the motion, we'll come back, we'll just do the recess and we'll come back and do the motion.
Thank you.